Good evening. Welcome to the January tenth, two thousand twenty-three City of Apopka Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. I'd like to call to order and then have the moment of silent prayer and pledge to the flag. Please stand.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first order of business is election of officers for two thousand twenty-three. So we will need a nomination for chairperson from the board.
Mr. Chairman, are you willing to continue on the position this year?
If you make me, yes.
I'll put together a nomination to nominate you to continue for this year.
Okay. Nomination from Commissioner Dooley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I don't get to watch anymore. I've got to do it still. All right. Need to elect a vice chairman, so we will need a nomination from the board for the vice chair for two thousand twenty-three.
I'll nominate Commissioner Washington for vice chair.
I have a nomination for Commissioner Washington. Commissioner Ryan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rendo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
All right. Item number one, approval of minutes of planning commission meeting held December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Everybody reviewed those and approved?
Yes.
Okay. Need a motion to approve, please?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Ryan to approve the planning commission meeting minutes held December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Dooley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anyone here from the public that wishes to speak on a matter that is not on our agenda this evening, now would be the time to do that. During each item, there will be a public comment section where you are allowed to come up and speak. If there's any items that you would like to discuss that are not on their agenda, now would be the time. Seeing none, we'll move on.
Mr. Chair, I want to make a minor revision to the agenda. Actually, going to take item two in public hearing first before item one, so we'll just flip them on the agenda.
Comprehensive plan for Haus and Family Trust?
Yes.
We want to do that first and then move the special exemption after?
Correct.
Okay, you can do that. All right, we're going to move to number two. Comprehensive plan, small-scale future land use amendment, active living ILF. Owners, the Haus and Family Trust, applicant Lounes Law Firm. Location is two zero two one Old Dixie Highway. Mrs. Reed?
This is Roxanne Reed with the City of Apopka. The project, as you stated, is the small-scale future land use amendment for active living independent living facility. This is the vicinity map that you'll see here, and I know there was some discussion previously about the location of this. You can see, as I'm showing here, this is the parcel that was previously brought in a few years ago for an independent living facility. This is the low's area here, and then this parcel is just northwest of that parcel. So I know it's a little bit confusing. This request is to change the future land use designation from residential low to residential high that will allow the density increase needed to support the development of an independent living facility on this property. This will serve as a transition between the commercial future land use to the south that you see there and then the residential low to the north. And this is the proposed residential high future land use shown on the map here. The Development Review Committee did review this and they recommended approval, and the recommended motion is to find this proposed change in future land use consistent with the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report. I'm available and the applicant is also available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Does anyone have questions of staff?
I do.
Commissioner Dooley?
In this review, Ms. Reed, in this review, were there any neighbors that came forward to express positive or negative feedback about this project?
We haven't received any since the information was sent out. I believe that there were some comments when the applicant held the community meeting. They did have some comments. I believe those are shown in the staff report that their comments included property value impacts, traffic, building height, lighting, government assistance, and environmental concerns.
Any more questions of staff? All right. The applicant have a presentation? Your name and address for the record, please, sir.
While it's being set at McGregor Love, two fifteen North Eola Drive, from the Lounes Law Firm, here on behalf of the applicant. My presentation today is set up in the order that the agenda was as it's printed, so if it's okay with the commission, if it's acceptable, I'll go through the special exception criteria and the comprehensive plan amendment criteria and answer any questions that you have at the end, if that's acceptable. So the two requests that we have today, first, approval of a special exception to allow an independent living facility in the RSF one A zoning district, subject to the conditions that have been imposed by staff and agreed to by the applicant, which we will discuss in more detail moving forward, and recommend approval of a future land use map amendment from residential low to residential high. So what is a use allowed by special exception? Of course, this commission knows, but for the benefit of anyone who does not, the city includes some uses that will only be allowed by special exception. This is the code definition, is a use that may be appropriate in the district, but because of the nature, extent, and external impacts, requires consideration of its location, design, and methods of operation. Just an independent sort of case-by-case analysis of whether a particular, usually non-residential institutional use, is appropriate in a residential area. And as you know, special exception uses must meet the criteria under the Land Development Code, which we will go through. The location, as Ms. Reed showed, it's here, right to the north of Old Dixie Highway, on the north end of it. To the north, there's single-family residential; to the east, single-family residential; to the south, commercial developments. A part of that's within the city, a part of it's within the county. And to the west is single-family residential. The general location, as I mentioned, is along Old Dixie Highway. This is a ten-point-four-two acre site, the existing future land use residential low, RSF one A zoning, and the proposed future land use is residential high. Some background here, in April of two thousand twenty-two, the applicant met with city staff and submitted a special exception application. In June, on June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, a community meeting was held for the special exception. This was a virtual community meeting. We had involvement from the residents in the area. There were some concerns and some folks who were just there to hear what was being proposed, and we answered those questions and addressed the concerns as best we could. From June to November of two thousand twenty-two, the applicant has worked with the city's staff to agree to certain conditions regarding the design and sort of operation of the facility. And the applicant submitted the future land use map amendment during those discussions. Initially, it was just a special exception and a height variance request, and it was, you know, worked out with staff that it made more sense to seek a future land use map amendment and special exception. On December fourteenth, DRC meeting was held on the project and the Development Review Committee recommends approval subject to the conditions. So the proposed plans, this is the latest site plan you see here. It anticipates a three-story building with one hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-two square feet. The density is a hundred and forty independent living facility beds that works out to about thirteen-point-four dwelling units per acre. There was some question initially whether the city considered ILF or ALF to be counted as density or intensity. We are counting this as density, so it's around thirteen-point-four dwelling units per acre. The maximum height, which was approved by the Community Development Director, is forty-one feet, one-fifth-eight inch, the mean roof height being thirty-six feet, and one-seven-sixteen. The architectural design, this is one of the conditions agreed to by the applicant, has to be consistent with the elevations that were submitted and compatible with the sort of surrounding residential home types. The amenities, which you can see on here but are small, so I'll go ahead and point them out. So tennis court, there are three pickleball courts, a sand volleyball court, a community garden, a pool, a dog run area, a cornhole, badminton, horseshoe pit areas, and an outdoor walking trail and a gazebo. These are the elevations, which are not in color, and they're two-dimensional, so hard to get a sense for what this will look like in purpose. So what we had the applicant do is to submit artistic renderings from another project that active living has done, and it's comparable, but just shown for demonstration purposes only here. This is a similar style of building that you'll see in this project. So I'll go through the special exception criteria. We're not in that section yet, but it'll be helpful to frame the future land use request as well. The first is that the proposed use will be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. The housing element does specifically call out the need for special care facilities for the elderly. This is the snip from the special housing requirements. The objective eight of the comprehensive plan states that the city shall allow group homes and foster care communities in any residential land use classification in accordance with the Land Development Code. And the project would increase the diversity of housing options in the city, and this is policy one-point-one that talks about eliminating barriers to the provision of adequate housing and to provide a variety of housing types that can accommodate a wide range of incomes. Second criteria is that the project must comply with all zoning district standards. We will do that. The project will comply with all standards in section four-point-two-point-three regarding principal uses standards for principal uses. Criteria number four is that the project will be appropriate for its location and is compatible with the general character of the surrounding area. This is a quote from staff's report. This type of development will also allow residents to age in place in their community, which is part of the why the code allows, as a special exception, for these types of facilities to be located in residential areas. The idea is that it serves as a place where folks can, you know, sort of age in place in the community in which they lived and surrounded by other residential uses. So the area surrounding the property is mostly comprised of residential developments. There's shopping centers to the southeast. Many of the surrounding homes were built in the mid-nineteen nineties, and, you know, the appearance of our structures, as shown by the elevations and the renderings, will enhance and add to the general character of the surrounding area. The fifth criteria is that the project will adequately screen, buffer, and minimize visual impacts from the adjacent lands. The project will provide significant building setbacks a hundred feet or greater along the northwest and east property boundaries. That's well in excess of the zoning district standards. The buffering, thirty feet or greater along the northwest and east boundaries, twenty feet of buffering along the south boundary, that's Old Dixie Highway, and additional enhanced buffering in stormwater ponds, community gardens, amenities like the tennis court, the pickleball court. The project will be designed in an attractive manner that will, in any case, minimize the visual impacts. Criteria six, ensure that no site lighting source will negatively impact adjacent properties in right-of-way. Will comply with code as it relates to lighting regulations. Criteria seven, maintain safe ingress and egress and traffic flow onto and through the site. The property will, the owner and the operator will maintain safe ingress and egress through that primary access point on Old Dixie Highway, which you can see there at the southern end of the site plan overlaid on the aerial. Traffic flow onto the site by vehicles and pedestrians will be designed in a safe and convenient manner, and safe road conditions will be maintained. Public works, of course, at the site plan stage will confirm that the city's own requirements are met in that regard. The project must avoid significant odor, noise, glare, and vibration impacts. You know, it's a low-intensity residential use. You know, it's a controlled environment. There'll be operational rules and regulations to ensure that it's not impacting surrounding properties in that manner. Criteria nine, the project will not have an adverse impact on land values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop uses permitted in the zoning district. Again, you know, the surrounding homes in the area were built around thirty years ago, so approval will allow, you know, a premium, modern facility that should actually have a positive impact on home values. The project will avoid deterioration of water and air resources, will not cause any deterioration of water, air, or other natural resources. The project will not overburden existing public facilities. Like any project, it must meet, you know, concurrency and not violate the level of service adopted by the city. And finally, I believe, unless there's one more, the project will comply with all other city, state, and federal laws. Finally, we are to the future land use map amendment from low to residential high. This is the staff's finding that the residential high future land use designation will serve as a transition between the commercial future land use to the south of the property and the residential low future land use to the north of the property. And this, you've heard before, this type of development will allow residents to age in place in their community. And the future land use map amendment is consistent with the terms of the Apopka and Orange County Joint Planning Agreement as well. So again, the requests are approval of a special exception to allow the ILF, the independent living facility, in an RSF one A zoning district, subject to those conditions imposed by staff and agreed to by the applicant, and the public hearing that we are in now, the item we're in now, which is recommend approval of the future land use map amendment from residential low to residential high. I'm here to answer any questions that you have, and when the next item comes up, I can also go back through any slides to further provide information if needed. Thank you.
Actually, Mr. Chair, for the sake of efficiency, I think we can combine items one and two. We can combine the public hearing and the questioning, just there's no point going back. I wasn't aware that the applicant was going to combine his presentation in two. The important thing to note is that when it comes to the vote, that we're going to vote on item two first, which will be the land use amendment, and then there will be a vote on item one, which is the special exception. Also of note is that unlike other special exceptions that come before you, this special exception will not become effective upon your vote today, but we'll put it on the record that the effective date of the special exception is contingent on the future land use being adopted by the city council, because as of today, there is not a compatible land use for this use. While it is a special exception and permitted under the current zoning, they currently do not have the density until the future land use amendment is approved by the city council. You can vote on those, but it'll just have a conditional effective date. It will not be effective until the land use is adopted by the city council. Should the city council not approve the land use, then the approval of the special exception today becomes moot.
Would be negated, right?
Correct. So I think you can take questions from the public on both items.
Okay.
It's just, remember that your decision on the land use is not contingent on any of the comments or facts presented, special exception, and vice versa.
I understand. Okay, then first, this would be quasi-judicial, so I would have to ask, has anybody had ex parte communication on this matter?
No.
Seeing none, we'll move forward.
Can I remind the commission that it's quasi-judicial solely as to the special exception? The land use amendment is not quasi-judicial.
Understood. Boy, it's making it confusing. All righty. Do we have any questions of the applicant?
Yes, I do.
Commissioner Washington?
Thank you, sir. So I'm just dealing with the special exception piece. You have, you made reference to age in place more than once, but yet, this is supposed to be an independent living facility. Now, I don't know everything, but I do understand that there is a continuous care facility that has independent assisted living, nursing, dementia, multiple parts. In my mind, that's age in place. You're good to go when you go in there, and then you're not good to go at the end. So why is this an assisted independent living facility? That's how you're presenting it, but yet you keep on saying age in place?
Well, to clarify, that was a comment made by staff. It was not my own comment, but, you know, the independent living facility is intended to be certainly not the age in place scenario you presented there, where there's kind of the multiple progression in age groups, but it's geared towards a specific aged population, and the notion would be that they could go from, you know, living perhaps, you know, in a home nearby, somewhere else in the city, and they could be relocated to that location where they could live, you know, for an extended period of time. And if they, certainly if they needed assisted living, maybe another facility that could provide it, but, yeah, I don't know if that answers your question, but it wasn't...
Yeah, that was a curve ball when I saw that, age in place.
Yeah.
But thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Commissioner Ryan?
Tell me about the thirty-foot buffer zone. I'm kind of concerned about that three-story building looking over into residential houses.
So the thirty-foot buffer is the landscape buffer, not the setback? So...
Right, the thirty-foot, yeah. The setback looks like around one hundred and twenty feet from the lock line. I'm talking about the thirty-foot buffer zone. What's going to be there? Are there any trees going to be there?
Let me pull up the largest image of the site plan that we have here. So are you talking about the north end of the property line?
That's correct, yeah.
So if you can see, you know, heading down, you can see the very, very small there at the, oh, I've got this. I saw Roxanne use that. So here's the thirty-foot buffer, then you have the gazebo here, a stormwater pond, the sand volleyball court, a community garden. It now moves southward, and here's where the first building is, and then the hatched area here. I believe that is going to be a, I don't have the information about specifically...
I'm concerned about the north side thirty-foot buffer zone. What is in, is there anything in there? Is there any trees?
It will be, it'll be a landscape buffer, you know, as...
I don't see it anywhere in the plan unless I missed it. I mean, what kind of trees are there and how high are they going to be? Because I'm more concerned about that center building, it's looking right into the residential area, which is only one hundred and twenty feet away from that building. I just don't think we should go from three stories to one-story residential, you know? It kind of reminds me of the situation we've got on, what is that, East Lester Road, where we've got this three-story storage unit right behind one-story residential. This doesn't go.
And again, you know, I think that's part of the reason why staff wanted to ensure that we were sort of bound by the elevations that we'd submitted, and it is, you know, it's not going to be a three-story, you know, storage unit that's sort of flat wall...
Right, but they, yeah, I'm not worried about elevation. I'm worried about them being able to see, them having the privacy in their backyard, basically.
And let me see if I can pull up the aerial to give a better idea of kind of how And I'm not, I am frankly not sure, Commissioner Ryan, whether there's a wall there along their southern boundary of these homes. I would presume that there is a wall located right here.
Yeah, but it's only going to probably be six feet high.
Right, and, you know, there is a requirement under the special exception conditions that requires a type E buffer under code, so the project will be designed with that buffer, you know, incorporated within it to provide, you know, separation and visual separation?
So if you're in the third story of that building, center building, will you be able to look in their backyard? That's what I want to know.
I don't believe so, sir. I do not believe so.
I think you can. I kind of disagree with that statement, but I think you can, unless you have some tall trees there to give them some privacy.
Well, that would be something that we could address during the plan of the property and request that.
Correct.
Am I correct? That we can request...
That's not a subject matter for the special exception. If you're going to go into the details of the buffering and that, that'll come at site plan.
Once the site plan is done.
Right, but we're looking at approximately a hundred feet from the build, the closest building to the property line, and then there'll be an additional, I can't give you an estimation of what the additional footage is from what it appears to be probably impacting at most one or two houses on the north towards to their...
I think it's four or five houses, I think. Are we, so do we take in consideration if it's a three-story building and special exception?
And especially, it's, no, it's not one of the criteria. The nine criterias that are listed are what need to be met when it comes to a special exception, and staff has recommended approval, that the criteria, that the applicant has met the criteria for a special, for the special exception. And jurisprudence in Florida is, when it comes to a special exception, as long as the applicant meets the objective criteria of the code for a special exception, that they warranted to meet those standards and that... to meet those standards, and that whatever decision on the part of this commission has to be based on competent substantial evidence to support either a denial or an approval of such a special exception.
So it has nothing to do with being a three-story building?
No, you're solely looking at the nine criteria, and did the applicant meet those nine criteria? And if you believe that the applicant does not meet one of the nine, then this commission's basis for that decision has to be based on competent substantial evidence.
Okay.
To support that finding.
Okay, for future reference, what was the average age of your patients or residents?
I don't believe that they've determined that at this time. I think that the...it's 55 and over is the age range, but I don't know that they have an average age.
I think for independent living, I think it's somewhere around 70. Now, the ADA parking, I assume is minimum amount of ADA parking you have there, or accessible parking, I'm sorry?
And again, that'll be...let me pull up the concept plan.
Because I'm thinking these people, the average age of 70, believe more accessible parking than the general population. But that's not for me to determine that. That's just a statement I want to make to you.
Sure, and that's a fair statement, and certainly they'll meet code and ADA requirements, but that is a fair statement.
But you're just...will it just be based on the minimum, or will they take in consideration that it's an assisted...no, I'm sorry, independent living facility?
I don't know how they run that calculation. Certainly that's something that we can discuss with staff at the site planning stage, but I think it's a valid point.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions of the applicant?
I've got a question.
Commissioner Doobie.
First of all, I want to step back to Ms. Reed. You had said that there were public comments. I must have missed that in the packet we provided from the public. Did anybody else see that? Did I overlook that?
It made reference to that happening.
Yeah, but I didn't see the actual comments. That's what I was curious.
Well, it's not...I don't believe it's listed in here, because there wasn't a public meeting. There wasn't an announced public meeting.
But she said, but Ms. Reed said it was in the staff report, but I don't see those. I'm just saying that. I just wanted to clarify that, because I had hoped to see some public comments or hear some public comments from the neighboring properties maybe tonight.
Well, no sooner or not.
Sorry, yeah.
Well, no sooner or not.
Yeah, well, no sooner or not, because I also have heartburn based on the fact that if that was my house in the back of the property, that there was a light shining in my backyard, that would make me uncomfortable. And that weighs strongly on my mind about the light situation, and I would like to see that clarified, how that's going to affect the properties to the north and to the east in those neighborhoods for the lights.
And we know that the applicant did send out letters to the surrounding neighborhoods within 300 feet or the neighbors within 300 feet. We didn't hear anything back from the applicant, that they received any responses at this point.
And if I'm remembering correctly, the street, I will just say above, behind, whatever, is part of a community that is, I believe, 55 and over, and each home is a single-family home. You know, there are covenants, et cetera, and I just have a...I listen, and I have to agree with everybody. You know, somebody's standing on the third floor going, "Oh, what are they doing in their barbecue?" I have problems with that.
Any more questions, the applicant?
All right, I will say that if you're inclined to, you know, attach a condition of your own that you believe would ensure that privacy is maintained for those folks to the north, that's certainly something we could entertain if it's something that you think would provide an added layer of, you know, separation and protection for those homeowners. Certainly something that we can entertain.
But you don't have a plan for that? You don't have a solution?
Our plan and what we've committed to with staff was to have that type E landscape buffer and the separation between, the separation, you know, the 100 and I believe 20-foot setback, we believe was adequate, but if you don't feel that it's adequate to protect those neighbors to the north, we would entertain something more enhanced to ensure that it is.
You mean, we're supposed to come up with a solution? Were you?
I mean that it, you know, a condition saying that we will ensure that the third floor of the proposed building cannot view the, you know, the backyard or into the houses of the adjacent properties to the north. You know, that's something that we can work through at the site planning stage if we're bound to it. Certainly something I'm sure that the end user, active living, would be happy to do. So, yes.
Well, sir, to both your all's point, I think one thing that would relieve somewhat my heartburn on this project would be that if we were to condition to have mature trees placed around the property to the north and east, and I'm not talking, you're not going to be able to put a live oak tree there today that's going to shade it, but if we could put young trees in there that would grow into mature trees within a reasonable period of time, I think that might...that would make me more comfortable to provide privacy for both parties. But we'll see if anybody from the areas are here to talk about it. I hope so.
Well, I just don't think we should go from three stories to one-story residential, where they can look into their backyard. That's the problem I have, and I don't see a solution to it, and I don't see a future solution to it. I mean, I'm not against the plan at all. I think it's great. We need independent living facilities. It just needs to be done correctly in the right spot, maybe two stories, instead of three.
Question for staff. Is that, is the trees, Commissioner Doobie's suggestion, the trees would be something that we could make as a condition during the actual site plan, correct?
I would suggest doing it at the special exception stage, and it would be just amending this condition. I was going to remind you that there are four conditions listed at special exception when you do the vote. There are those four conditions listed. The fourth condition is that type E buffer, so if you wanted to amend that, that definitely sounds like something the applicant is open to.
So that would be something that we could do now?
Correct.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
One thing that I see, every building I see like that, a big building, has exterior lighting, and I don't want to see those lights shining into those neighboring homes, where somebody that's used to sleeping in their bedroom is going to have to get, you know...I just, I'm not happy about that.
Well, I...
That could be another condition added, too, if you wanted to add that condition.
Right, and there isn't parking or anything in the back that would necessitate lights, so that could be a condition also added.
The parking doesn't bother me, it's just the lights.
Well, I'm saying that the parking lot would have the larger lights in it, and usually on the back of the building will have lower, you know, low-density lighting, but okay.
I would hope so, yeah.
All right. Okay, so we have two conditions we're considering. All right, we're going to move on to the public comments section. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this matter? Yes, sir, if you'd please come to the podium and your name and address.
Over here.
Yes, sir. That's okay, no, just come to the podium and you speak into the microphone so everybody can hear you. Just give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name's Gregory Frye. I'm at 2134 Lake Marion Drive, where the sand volleyball court is. There's a couple other of us here who are all, we're the community garden going past the sand volleyball court that way. We all have really small children, like newborns up to four, five, six, seven years old. All these houses almost minus two, and we are always all in our backyards. And you could see someone standing 10 feet from our fence. You could really see them, because we're kind of slanted down a hill, so that whole lot is actually sitting up a little bit higher than our houses. So, I mean, anything over one story is just going to be able to see right in all of our backyards. All of our windows, our pool decks, like my children's rooms, all of that on that side especially, and three stories not going to make that any better. And that's, I mean, 100 feet isn't anything, and there's just a small wood fence. There's no brick wall or anything behind there. And that's just kind of scary, you know, because you don't know who's up in those three-story rooms looking down at your small children in your own backyard. That's a huge concern for us, just to, you know, go so drastically from single-story to three-story kind of commercial property is pretty devastating to us, especially some of us just bought into that area because we didn't have commercial property in our backyard, and now it's just going to follow us right there. But that's about it. Like, we just like to keep it not a three-story building, more residential, because, you know, you don't want to go in your backyard and just look at a huge building that's looking right back at you, or not be able to enjoy it, or, yeah, lights shining there, what their times would be when they're allowed to use the facility.
Understood, thank you. Now, just to clarify, you are on the, so you're on the east, or, excuse me, the west side of the property adjacent to where they're showing the volleyball courts?
Yeah, where the sand volley...mine goes from the edge of the community garden to where the little umbrella would be, so that three-story building would be mainly directing right into my backyard.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't...the volleyball court's there. What do I know? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, does there anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir. Please come up and give us your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Jose Perez. I live in 2110 Lake Marion Drive, which is right around the corner there where the community garden is. What he said is true. That's an old neighborhood. I don't know if you've ever been there. Very nice neighborhood. I mean, quiet, peaceful. I'm worried that, looks like they have a fun area there, pool, they have the volleyball court or whatever that is. Is that going to be noisy? At what times are they going to close those areas? Because, I mean, it's a really quiet area. You can ask any of the neighbors. Regarding the property values, it's an old neighborhood, but it's a very nice area, and prices are not bad there. And I always wonder if something like this, like all the noise, the lights and all that, is going to affect the property value there. There's some young couples there that are getting, just bought houses there at good prices, I mean, for everybody, for the buyers and the sellers, but that worries me.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Probably don't need that option here. Jerry Schubert, 1042 Old South Lane in Arrow Estates, and I'm in agreement with the people...my one question is, the tennis courts, if they're operated in the evening, there's going to be lighting there that's going to impact homes. And in the back at the moment, as I go back and forth to Winn-Dixie all the time, there are no trees currently at the back of the property, the north section that we're talking about? And if, as this gentleman indicated, we could plant some trees, yeah, maybe a 10-foot tree, but it's going to take 15 years to get 45 feet. So you're either going to have to have them magnolias touching each other in order to be able to create a buffer.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to speak? Seeing no one else, bring it back to the board for discussion.
Well, Mr. Commissioner, I'm very thankful that people from the public came to express their opinion here tonight, either for or against the project. I'm just, I'm really having severe heartburn about this project, given the proximity to the neighborhoods and what I feel are going to be negative impacts, and as this gentleman just said, you know, even if we plant trees there, 15 years, I mean, that's going to be a rough 15 years for those folks, and I'm just, I'm struggling here.
I'll make a proposal to the guy on the future land use. Or, I'm sorry, no, we have to do the future land use first. You're right. I apologize.
Pardon me, if I could, I apologize for interrupting. I just wanted, I was able to speak with the developer, and they are willing to plant mature trees along that fence line, along that wall line, to ensure that there's kind of not the privacy concern that was mentioned by those residents. The amenities you see here are able to be moved around the property, so there's a concern regarding the location of the amenities, you know, in relation to the neighboring property. They can be moved further to the south to make sure that there's adequate separation. The applicant certainly is flexible to design this in a way that makes sure that it's compatible with, and addresses the neighbor's concerns. If you're inclined to entertain those measures, that they're willing to condition it on it and be bound by it.
Thank you. Okay, we need a motion on the future land use first, the future land use amendment, and then we will address the special exception.
I'm still struggling here, sir. Even with, we could make all the conditions in the world tonight, but, and I understand that those are binding, and they would go to the city council for them to review it completely, so all our work may be for naught or it may not be, but I would feel much more comfortable voting on this if we pushed this back and saw the trees on this lot, we had to talk to the neighbors, the neighbors were happy about it, or at least mollified, and that would make me a lot more comfortable with this project. I appreciate your all's work in wanting to fix this solution. I'm just not sure tonight is the right for us to move forward with a future addressing of those. I would like to see it addressed before we move forward.
Well, that would be on the conditions we would add to the special exemption.
Or you could table it tonight, maybe come back with a...
Yeah, that's where I'm getting at, thank you. That's the right word.
You want to table it?
We could table both issues, or we could pass the future land use amendment or deny the future land use amendment, and then address the special exemption with the conditions that we would like added. Have staff table it at that point, but the future, in other words, the future land use is not going to be, have conditions on it. So we could complete that tonight and then table the special exemption. Am I correct, Mike?
The two items are separate when it comes to your consideration. So you can consider the future land use amendment, and then you can consider the special exception. Future land use amendment, you are acting as a recommendatory, you're giving a recommendation to the city council when it comes to future land use amendment. As to the special exception, you are the final deciding authority. So at this point, I mean, if the, if you want to proceed forward with a vote on the future, I'd probably advise, let's move forward now with a vote on the future land use amendment. Have that vote be done, and then we'll take into consideration the actions regarding the special exception.
Then we can discuss the next...
Right, except now, again, I would carefully advise this commission, when it comes to a special exception, you are to consider the nine criteria, and your decision, whichever way you decide, you must, that decision must be based on competent substantial evidence in order to either withstand a challenge or to be affirmed. And the courts are very strict when applying challenges to special exceptions that fall outside of the nine objective criteria set forth in the code.
Okay, have a motion to approve or deny the future land use, and then we'll address the special exemption. So I need a motion from the board, please.
I just need a second here.
Mr. Chairman, may I talk, may I come? It just seems to me that both of these decisions go hand in hand, and I would just prefer to see this tabled until there's further discussion, where information may get available to the commission, as well as, as Commissioner Doobie said, I think we all like to hear about what the homeowners have to say. We had a couple homeowners that spoke tonight, but personally, I'd like to hear more about that. And talking about solutions, well, the solution has to be satisfactory to the homeowners. Not us up here. You know, if the old homeowners came over here and said, "Yeah, vote for it, go for it, all right, we'll do that," but to me, I don't, I'm not comfortable with it right now. I'm not against the project. I like the idea of it. We need these kind of things, and this kind of... I like the idea of it. We need these kinds of things. And this kind of project was sitting out there on that old Dixie Road for a couple of years now, and here's an opportunity to put one in. But it's just, I'm not comfortable with doing it right now without more information about how this issue with, you know, residents in the independent living facility get, being able to look down onto the backyards of other people's property. And Commissioner Dumey talked about the trees and when the residents talked about, well, hey, it'll take about 15, 20 years to get a canopy tree to grow up that high. You know, if you know slopes and that sort of thing, 100 feet and you go up, well, how does that tree have to be in order to cut off that line of vision? That's a long time. So that's what bothers me.
And Commissioner Washington, I understand that. And, you know, when we put these projects together as a general matter, we try to anticipate kind of what the issues are. This one's been moved around. You see how the, the building sort of now follows kind of a, you know, it goes back towards the right of way. That was done out of, you know, the concern that was brought up tonight. But some of these issues that we're discussing are issues that the team may or may not have heard from residents about before or tried to address, which is, which is why the applicant is accepting of a tabling, if that's what you're inclined to do. So we can go back and really present, you know, a revised plan or further information about, you know, this plan that would satisfy your concerns. So we do accept a tabling of this item. And but regarding the future land use, what I believe the city attorney was mentioning is that if you were to recommend approval of a future land use map amendment, by the time, I believe, that we are back here, if we're at the next meeting, that amendment shouldn't have been adopted and finalized by the city council by that time. I believe that's correct. So when we are here again, if we show you a revised plan and you're still not satisfied with it, the city council can take that into account when they look at the future land use map amendment, which would not serve this purpose anymore. It would just be a way of streamlining the process. But of course, you're, you have all authority to do as you please.
I have a question for the attorney. So the future land use, we're looking at moving this from residential low to residential high. That's what our future land use. And the special exception is allowing the independent living facility, correct?
The special exception allows it to, to operate on that zoning district. And what the future land use amendment does is it allows the density to go. As of now, that the, without a future land use amendment, let's just take it off the table, yes, that this use would be permitted in this zoning district as a special exception. The only reason for the future land use amendment is to allow this use at the intensity that the applicant is requesting.
Okay. So to my next point would be that if we were to approve the future land use amendment to move it from residential low to residential high, the applicant backed out, then say an apartment could come into this building sometime in the next couple of years and take this property and do apartments there because now it's residential high. Is that correct?
No, they would have to, you would then have to amend the zoning category to allow, to allow for such a use, a consistent use. Because right now, the zoning remains, I think it's RSF, well, I just forgot that, RSF-1, which is a low density. However, a assisted living facility is a permitted use as a special exception. An apartment cannot go in there by right unless they rezone the prop, they would then have to come in for a zoning amendment to allow for a zoning that would allow for a higher residential intensity. So they wouldn't be able to turn around and go and put in apartments. Also, I want to clarify just with the facts because we're looking at the objective criteria. And the issue that's come up with the three-story height and, and the distance to the other, to the other lots, again, I wanted to make it stress and stress it on the record that the three-story building is not, in its entirety, 100 feet from the property line of the houses. You're looking at an approximation perhaps of, in some buildings, 300 to 400 feet from the abutting residential property to the north. So I just want to make that clear. Also, the, the design is not part of the subject of the special exception, because that can always come back. What the special exception is, is allowing the use. How that use is done is then brought forward at site plan. But your decision has to be based on the use and the nine criteria outlined in the special exception ordinance. How that use is then applied, that's for a future date. But unless your decision is based on that one of the nine criteria is not met, that is what is necessary to sustain your decision one way or another. Just want to remind you of that.
Okay. I agree with the attorney. I think the best thing for all parties is just to do a table everything. Let them come back with a solid plan we can work with. We can?
I'd second that.
You want to make a motion?
I just want to remind this commission, if you're tabling the land use amendment, you are adding basically a two-month delay to this project.
The future land use.
To the future land use, because it cannot come back before this board to February, which means that it cannot go back to city council to the two March meetings. You can recommend one way or another. If you want to recommend denial, it'll go up to the city council with a recommendation of denial. And then the city council can address it at that point. The city council has to address it at two public hearings with the opportunity for the public to participate with your recommendation. Our table, I would advise against tabling the land use amendment, because it would just add, you're adding two months to the project, when it's a matter that's going to be discussed twice by the, at the city council level, one way or another. However you recommend, you can recommend however you wish when it comes to the land use amendment. And we could table the, the special exception because even if you would have acted on the special exception today, it would not be effective until the future land use amendment would become effective. And if it were to continue on its current track, the future land use amendment wouldn't be effective until at least 31 days from the adoption meeting, which would have been at the second meeting in February for the city council. So the, the special exception wouldn't be effective until about approximately mid-March.
I just don't think we should rush to judgment on here. This is a major project. I mean, make sure we get it right.
I agree with that, but I think, I think what's getting missed here is the future land use is sent off to the state for approval and that takes a considerable amount of time. And should we decide, or we, the applicant comes up with something that's satisfactory to all of us, I think Michael's point was that should we table both of them, then the day that we say the special exemption, okay, they're going to put a 40-foot wall or whatever in the back. Now, we're two months behind because of the future land use. All these things can be addressed in zoning also. This is just the use of the land. It doesn't give anybody in the future the ability to do anything. It doesn't, that's, that's outside of the zoning. So all this is, is letting that be the application for the future land use to be changed. And then things can move forward from there, whether we approve or deny the special exemption if we table it. But tabling it now, in other words, if we table it now and we decide to approve it, next meeting, he comes up and they've theoretically, they got a 40-foot wall back there and everybody's happy and all the homeowners are happy. Now, they're dead in the water for two months for something that really has no bearing whatsoever on whether the finished project is going to have the exception or the zoning to finish with. So I think that's the point.
Okay, that's a good point.
We're tabling something that really is going to be irrelevant to the special exemption as far as that goes.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying? So the special exemption, if we table that, that puts it off 30 days. We got 30 days to work on that. The future land use, if we table that, now we've turned that into 60 days. And should we decide to approve it or something changes with the applicant, now we're dead in the water for no reason whatsoever, because all the, we can't make exceptions to the future land use. We can't say, well, we'll give you the future land use if you put trees up. So it's really, it's kind of just one step in the process and we're three or four steps away. And it's not a final judgment. It's just our recommendation going to city council. So that gives another two weeks or 30 days for them to discuss. So that's why I think make a motion now on that, clear that up, get that off the table, then we'll discuss the special exemption and changes to it or the nine criteria.
Okay, I'm comfortable making a motion based on all of our discussions here tonight. Because I agree with both you gentlemen and I also agree with the attorney's point. And I think to be fair to all parties, including the applicant, I think we should kick this up to the city council and let them
Exactly.
Work it out with the public, public hearing. I think they're going to have a hard row, but we'll see what happens. And my motion would be to recommend a denial of this future land use amendment.
You just said you wanted to kick it up to the city council.
Yeah, if we deny it. It's our recommendation is deny and it's going to go up to the city council and they can decide whether they want to approve it or not.
All right.
My recommendation is that we move forward with the denial at this point.
Okay.
And I second that.
If you would read that as the
Let me find it.
The motion, please.
Thank you. I'm making a recommendation to find the proposed change in the future land use residential low to residential high inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code and incompatible with the character of the surrounding areas. And I recommend denial of the future land use amendment based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report from exhibits.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Dumey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. So that's going to move that to the city council. Now we go to the special exemption. Discussion.
I, I'll make a motion now so we can move forward on this. My motion.
We were going to table it or?
Would be to table, to table the special exception.
Make a motion to table.
For this meeting, for the next, till the next review process. Is that the correct terminology, Mr. Attorney?
Is that sufficient?
Is that?
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Dumey to table. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Special exemption is tabled to the following month's meeting.
Thank you.
All righty. Okay. Item number three, comprehensive plan, small-scale future land use amendment, soil blending properties. Owners, Soil Blending Properties LLC, Raynor and Apopka Land Management LLC. Applicant, Michael Dinkel. Location, 136 Hermit Smith, says Smithy, but I assume that's Hermit Smith Road. Mrs. Reed.
This is Roxanne Reed with the city. As you said, this is a small-scale amendment.
Ms. Reed, could you speak up a little bit? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Okay, this is Roxanne Reed with the city. Is that better?
That's better.
This is the small-scale.
Excuse me, excuse me. Can you please take your discussion outside? We're trying to hold a meeting here. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Small-scale future land use amendment for soil blending properties. The recommendation is to approve the future land use amendment from County Rural and City, very low density suburban residential to city residential. And this is the vicinity map here. And one of the properties, the parcel to the west, was annexed into the city on December 21st of last year, just a few weeks ago, as you can see it listed here. The future land use designation of industrial is compatible with the area, as you can see here on this map. And this is property that is being operated by Raynor Shine, who have operated a business here for several years. They are requesting that their property all have an industrial future land use designation to make it compatible. And there is also a rezoning application that would be heard after this one. The Development Review Committee did recommend approval of this change and the recommended motion for the planning commission is to find this change compatible and consistent with the comprehensive plan, the land development code, and compatible with the area. I'm available for questions and I believe the applicant is also here available.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Do we have any questions of staff?
Yes, I do.
Commissioner Ryan.
Okay, it says on here, there's two areas of wetlands. There's one to the, the north and one to the south. Is that correct?
Correct.
It looks like the one to the south, it doesn't exist anymore. It looks like it's been developed.
And we're talking about the properties that are outlined here in yellow. That was what was shown on the wetland inventory map that I looked at. So it was showing that there's some wetlands here. It looks like they have avoided those wetlands in the current development.
Actually, the southern wetland looks like it's been developed. It doesn't look like it's there anymore when I looked at it in the maps today. And then part of the western side of the wet zone and the north, north side of the property, it looks like that's part of that's been, been developed already. Has there been any mitigation on these wetlands?
That would be something for the applicant to address. I'm not sure if the, you know, the current.
Did you approve that? Did you recommend to approve this?
Recommended approval for the change in land use for the two parcels that you see here. The southern portion is what has, the Raynor Shine has been operating on. And that's not part of this recommendation. The recommendation is for the two parcels highlighted here.
All right, let's talk to the applicant, please.
Okay.
All right. Do we have any more questions of staff?
Hi, Debbie Plaiso, 605 Delaney Avenue, Orlando, Florida. I'm sorry, didn't hear your question when I was sitting down.
Okay, there's two areas of wetlands that have been mentioned in the presentation. And it looks like the southern wetlands has already been developed, even though it still shows up on the National Wetlands Inventory. And then also on the north wetlands on the property. Part of that, the western side's been developed. Has this been, have these wetlands been mitigated already?
I'm not aware of that, actually. And the property owner's not here tonight. So I'm sorry, I can't answer the question.
Can we find out?
Yes, we can.
If you could refer.
We can find out. We'll definitely work with the applicant.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. Any more questions, the applicant? Seeing none. Thank you, ma'am. Move it to public comments. Thanks to anyone from the public here which should speak on this matter. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'll make a motion. I find the proposed change of future land use from County Rural and City, very low density suburban residential to city industrial consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the future land use amendment based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Motion by Commissioner Washington. Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Mary. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. All right. Item four, same property, change of zoning, Soil Blending Properties LLC and Raynor Apopka Land Management LLC. Applicant, Michael Dinkel. Location, 136 Hermit Smith Road. Mrs. Reed.
This is Roxanne Reed with the city. This is the change of zoning. The recommended, recommendation is to change the zoning from City County A1 Citrus Rural and City RSF-1A to City IL, which is light industrial. These are the maps showing the existing zoning and then the proposed zoning. And the Development Review Committee did recommend approval of this zoning change. And the recommended motion for Planning Commission is to find this proposed change consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code and compatible with the surrounding area. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Any questions of staff? All right. Any questions of the applicant? Very well. Bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find the proposed change in zoning from County A1 Citrus Rural and City RSF-1A to City IL, light industrial, consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas. Recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Thank you, Commissioner Rondo. Motion by Commissioner Rondo. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Rondo, motion by Commissioner Rondo, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Want to site plans. Shops of East Shore PD rezoning master plan and major development plan, owner Shops of East Shore LLC, applicant Kimberly Horn and Associates LLC, care of L. Jordan Draper PE. Location northeast corner of Okoye Apopka Road and Keane Road. Ms. Sanchez.
Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the Shops at East Shore Plan Development rezoning master plan and major development plan. The subject property is located on the northeast corner of Okoye Apopka Road and Keane Road. It's current, it currently has the future land use designation of mixed use permitting a maximum of 1.0 floor area ratio and a maximum of 15 dwelling units per acre. It is also currently within the MUESGT mixed used east shore gateway zoning sub-district. The Shops at East Shore is a consolidation of four parcels totaling approximately 28 acres. Properties, the properties have a current zoning designation of mixed use and a future, I'm sorry, and, uh, a zoning designation of T transitional and MUESGT mixed used east shore gateway, as well as future land use designation of mixed use. The applicant is proposing a planned development that includes a mix of commercial and residential uses. They're requesting a rezoning of the property to PD instead of a conventional zoning district to allow protection of natural environment of the features of the property, including some wetlands, floodplain, conservation and carst areas, just a tiny bit of carst areas, I understand it from our city engineer, that conventional zoning district development criteria on the property would make difficult to achieve. The applicant has worked with staff to design the site to locate each type of use pragmatically and ensure its capability with existing adjacent uses. The master plan and major development plan propose the development of a commercial multi-tenant center with three out parcels anchored by a grocery store, as well as an age restricted multifamily complex. The proposed permitted uses include those listed under the MUESGT zoning sub-district, as well as under exhibit B of the PD agreement. The proposed and provided maximum building height for the commercial buildings is 45 feet, while the maximum proposed height for the multifamily use is 65 feet or five stories. The major development plan includes the development of the first phase, also depicted as parcel five, the, of the PD master plan, that includes the grocery store use with the building area of 48,387 square feet. The PD will be developed in multiple phases with sufficient infrastructure for each phase to stand alone. The MDP also illustrates 3.78 acres of open space and amenity for parcel five, the grocery, grocery store portion, while 3.17 acres is required. The many, amenity open space program for this phase includes an amenitized stormwater area. Additional minimum required open space amenities, amenity areas will be provided at the time of development of the other phases, as each development application is submitted. Commercial uses are required to meet at least 20% of the development area and at least 30% of the residential development portion for open space. For the grocer, the applicant provides 356 parking spaces, while 333 spaces are required. Stormwater dry pond on the northeastern corner is surrounded by red maple trees, while the pond adjacent to Okoye Apopka Road is encased by a combination of red maples, southern magnolia, Japanese blueberry and little gem magnolia trees. The northern project boundaries is embellished by sycamore, Japanese blueberry, little gem magnolia and live oak trees. Red maple, shimmered oaks, live oak trees adorn red landscaped islands and line the Okoye Apopka Road frontage. The Keane Road frontage is decorated by a mix of crepe myrtles, little gem magnolia and red maple trees. The multifamily and commercial out parcels will undergo a separate development review process. Access is proposed on this, to the site on both Okoye Apopka Road and Keane Road. Okoye Apopka Road winding from two lanes to four lanes is under design, as is a new signal at the intersection at Keane Road. Because the site will be ready before the road winding, the applicant will install right and left turn lanes at the site entrances as interim, as interim improvements. Some access will be limited to right in, right out only. Right and left turn lanes at the intersection of Okoye Apopka Road and Keane Road will be installed in advance of the signal. The DRC recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Shops at East Shore Plan Development rezoning, master plan and major development plan, subject to findings of the staff report. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez, any questions of staff?
I'll, uh, Mr. Commissioner. I'm glad to see a grocery store going in that area, I think with all those residential units around the hospital area, this is gonna be acridive for the community, so that's good to see.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sure the applicants are happy to hear that.
Do we have any questions of the applicant?
Of, uh, of, uh, staff? The, uh, where are the carst areas?
Um, I was told by our city engineer on his cursory review that there's a small carst area, um, I think he may have said on the north. But he will look into that further at construction site plan during the full engineering review.
Okay, so when he does that, then they will build around that carst area, I think that's the implication.
Then they'll have to, yeah, they'll have to address it then, yes.
You're good?
I'm good.
Okay. Do we have any questions of the applicant?
And, and Chairman, I do have a pres, short presentation just to go through a couple of items if, if it's your pleasure, thank you. And, uh, good evening Chairman and fellow commissioners, my name is Jonathan Hules with the Lowndes Law Firm, 215 North Yola Drive, Orlando. Thank you, Jean. It's been a pleasure working with Jean and Jim and Pam on this project. Uh, we've been at it for quite some time, I think the project in conception has been, uh, in, in design, or at least preliminary design for several years. Uh, with me tonight, I have Jordan Draper, who is the, uh, project engineer with Kimberly Horn, and I also have Jamie Bennett and Leah Fitzpatrick with, uh, the developer WMG Development. As Jean mentioned, the property is, uh, in total 28 acres in size. It is made up of an assemblage of tax parcels that have been now unified in ownership, it's located on that northeast quadrant of Keane Road and Okoye Apopka Road. When you pan out from the aerial map, it, it shows you that this corridor is a, 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 a corridor of activity and there is, um, either entitled projects or projects in development or final projects all along it. And it's a, and it's really a, a, a confluence of different uses. You have the, the hospital, of course, on the north side, then you have Emerson Park, uh, located on, uh, the, in that same area, but on the east side, you have the rehabilitation and medical offices located just a little bit north. You might recall last year, I believe, this, uh, apartment project came through across the street. You have, uh, industrial that's been developed a little bit farther south and you have a mixed use project down here that is retail out parcels with multifamily to the rear. So, a, a, and so it's, it's a corridor that's gonna continue to develop. Uh, this is just, uh, in our mind, uh, a complimentary, uh, proposal of uses to what's already going on out there and, as was mentioned, bringing that retail component, that, uh, uh, national grocer, uh, to the area. This matches what I just described to you in that there's a confluence of different uses already approved along this corridor, everything from industrial to that high density residential across the street, to office and industrial located south, with mixed use being, uh, located on the east side, uh, of, of all the properties that are, uh, uh, within the city and, and have that designation. As was mentioned, um, this isn't assemblage of tax parcels. We had started off on this PD this past summer, uh, with also bringing in this northern flag lot into the city through an annexation and then the comp plan, the comp plan actually came before this board, uh, in the fall of last year, just giving it the mixed use designation after the property was annexed, which is obviously consistent with what the other, uh, sip, designations, city designations are, are in the vicinity. Uh, so we had a community meeting in, in June, late June, uh, June 28th, and we had, uh, several people from the area, they were all, attend, they were all from Emerson Park and they expressed support, they were very interested and just wanting to know, you know, wh, when the grocer was gonna become an online. Um, they have a keen interest in that. We then went forward with the annexation, which was two public hearings before city commission, we came before you with the comp plan, and then had two more public hearings before city commission on that this past fall. Um, the, the result is this transition placeholder zoning for the flag lot that was annexed and received that. And then, of course, we have this mixed used east shore gateway zoning for the remainder of the parcel, which is the, the, the majority, this is over 20 acres in size, this assemblage. Uh, that property originally received the, that designation back in 2017. It was a shift from office, uh, and, and residential to this mixed use east shore gateway zoning district. And, and that's a pretty intensive zoning district, uh, as a straight zoning district, in that it sets forth a, a minimum FAR and a maximum FAR, the minimum FAR being 0.25, the maximum being one, and of course 15 dwelling units per acre from residential. What we're proposing is, could be almost thought of as a down zoning, in that our FAR is actually less, so our total development is less than what would be otherwise required under east shore gateway. Our FAR is actually .11. So we wouldn't actually, we wouldn't be in conformance with the straight zoning mixed use east shore gateway district, or, cause we're less intense. But it is a mixed use project still, so it, it, it follows that intent. It, it, as Jean mentioned, it does, it is anchored and this first phase of the PD is, is also being brought before you, this is that major development plan, it's for the grocer and that, uh, inline retail that's gonna be adjacent to it, as well as a small medical office building here. As these others, uh, out parcels are developed, uh, we'll go through the, the standard review process, including this, the, the, the multifamily component, which the PD designates as age restricted senior housing, so that it is not market rate, it's geared towards, uh, age restricted senior housing, but that major development plan, if this PD is approved, would come before you at a future date with the specifics on how that's gonna look and how it's gonna comply with the PD performance standards, as well as all the other applicable standards of the land development code. So, um, a portion of the project in specifics is before you tonight, but if it's approved, as it's built out, you'll see it, um, as it further progresses. This is just a, a, and, and, uh, Jean showed this, this is, once again, that PD master plan, major development plan we were discussing. And I'll go through some elevations real quick, these are the elevations that are as part of the package. Uh, of course, there will be signage as soon as, um, it's appropriate to, 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 to process those, uh, through with the city, uh, but just run through those quickly. Um, I, I, I would say that, I, I, also, we know that, just by speaking with one of the neighbors this morning and, and exchanging some communications our team has with them this week, um, we know that there was gonna be dialogue that's gonna have to continue with, with our adjacent neighbors. I know Ms. Dottery's in the, uh, attendance tonight, we had an opportunity to talk to her before this meeting, and I think Leah from our team has also talked to her previously. There, and, and a perfect example of that is, uh, on, um, this parcel here, there was some recent demo activity because this was previously utilized as a greenhouse and, um, um, oops, sorry. Well, gotten away from it, sorry guys. And, and so when we demoed it in, uh, there were some impacts on, on the adjacent horse farm that Ms. Dottery owns in terms of noise and, uh, we're cognizant of that, we weren't made aware of that until she had reached out and, uh, we wanna work with her moving forward with this project, we wanna be, uh, good neighbors, we want to, uh, address concerns, uh, we're gonna work with her. And if there's tweaks to the site plan that need to be made between this planning commission and city council, uh, we're gonna have that dialogue and see what can be done in terms of buffering and landscaping and whatnot. But I know Ms. Dottery, Ms. Dottery here, is here, I don't, and I apologize for mispronouncing your last name, uh, and there may be some other neighbors that we have not heard from yet through this process, we've had several public hearings, we haven't, this, haven't received any feedback so far, other than what was expressed at that community meeting. So, uh, I would just like an opportunity to address any concerns in a rebuttal tonight. Obviously a dialogue moving forward in that this is a big, rather complicated project, but appreciate staff's recommendation for approval, look forward, um, to continuing working with them, would ask for your support, but also happy to answer any questions that you might have about, um, what's before you tonight.
Great, thank you. Any questions, the applicant?
Mr. Commissioner.
Wes, Commissioner Dooley.
Thank you for attempting to be a good neighbor, appreciate that. Also, I'm quite satisfied to see a, a Florida-based grocer that's known for providing good jobs and good benefits being part of that community, would provide some jobs for some people in that area. And I know they're, they're widely considered to be a, a great workplace and I thank you for bringing them to that community.
Sure.
Look forward to hearing the comments from the nearby property owners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Hi, uh, my name is Shelley Dottery, and if you look, if I get emotional, this is emotional, huh?
Your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, 1455 West Keane Road.
Thank you.
I'm directly behind the Publix and beside of it. If I get emotional, I'm sorry, cause this is emotional for me. If you look at this map, my barn is that green horse barn, okay? We're here back in 1990s when this was first zoned out with housing on this land. It was told that this land development around there was not gonna be any more than one house per five acres. Dr. Brown's house isn't a part of this, but you could see if you look to the, directly to the right of my barn, there's that blue house, he's a veterinarian. That's why we all bought out, well, that's why the previous people bought. I came along and, um, worked there, fell in love with the place, have been there over 12 years now, and, um, I just did not, I just found out tonight, there's five, did I understand they said that they were putting five-story buildings? Is that what I just heard? Cause you have to understand, the first notice that I have known about this was last Friday, I got a certified. I didn't know any about any previous hearings or I would have been here. I found out last Friday and I immediately called zoning and they can tell you this on the phone, going, what's going on, what does this mean? And that some of these horses were born on this property and they are very, very fragile animals. You might think that they are, oh, strong, cause people think of horses that way, and I know I'm just a small little person, um, breathe, um, and it's concerning with having five, five-story buildings over them and people getting to my property, oh, let's give the horsey a carrot, let's give the horsey, um, an apple. These horses have, some of them have, they're, they're, are, um, geriatric, they have cushions, which means it's, they're like diabetics, they can't have any sugar. I have horses that have had colic surgery already, one colic surgery is seven to 10,000 plus fif, $15,000, depending on how bad it is. I have a horse on property that's already had one because horses colic easily, to noises, to machines, to misa, sounds, they think everything's going to eat them. I am landlocked, so I can't do anything. I've already lost two, last week I've lost two of my customers, which is money out of my pocket. I had somebody come in yesterday to look at my barn. They walked off property, cause I had to be honest to them what's going on. I'm not gonna bring an animal in. I'm not going to bring an animal in and not tell them what's going on. It's not fair to that horse because that horse is going to be subject to given sex. And that's what I can tell you. And I'm sorry, I'm upset. I would have been here to previous means to find out there's five-story buildings going in. And I know they're saying, I did talk to them out there, they're right. And I said 10-foot, with land erosion that happens out there and if somebody came and looked, that's not going to, that's going to rot out. You put in, talked about putting in another subdivision, magnolias? They take 20 years to grow. Look at the rate of growth on this. Those trees won't work. You're going to have to put sycamores or something if you want fast growing for that other subdivision. May, I have two on my property, I can show you that's been there for 12 years. This, but this, back to me, this is just very concerning to me. And I know they said they're going to work with me, but I did not know about all this. I did not know everything until just tonight. And I mean, I know I'm just a small person in this. But these animals, some are born there and I'm just concerned. And now my business is also met. I'm losing like money out of my own pocket because of this. I understand we need development. I don't want to be difficult. Publix says great, I shop there. I have friends that work there and higher up in district and management. I knew this was happening. Publix was talking about this land, but I never got anything on it. I don't know what else to say. I just, if something happens, I just want to make sure it's right. And I'm sorry, I'm crying, I get emotional over this. Because these are like my children. Every one that comes through that door, I learn their personality. I learn everything about them. I take care of them every day. When I leave here tonight, I'm going back to go and fan camera, put blankets on them. And we're going to be pushed out and now this stuff, these places. I'm sorry. I just didn't know, everything I heard tonight beforehand. And like I said, the only time, besides one other thing way back, was I got a certified on Friday. That's the first time I heard about it. Or I would have been here before talking to try to figure things out. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you ma'am.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Ma'am, thank you for coming tonight, but I just want clarification. Are you opposed to the grocery store, the Publix? Are you opposed to the potential building that's going to the north? Are you opposed to both?
Right now I'm kind of in shell shock because I just found out more than what, than just the Publix. I knew it was mixed land use. I knew that they talked about having shops and stuff. I did not know, we're talking five-story. I did not know any of that. I did, so I don't even know what to oppose because I'm still kind of, I'm shocked. I just found out. So how am I supposed to say what I want until I have time to think, you know, figure it out? I can't give you an answer to that honestly because I've got to think about it. You know, when I'm speaking before, I'm thinking, no, a Publix, you know what they look like? A building and, you know, like you're putting up a wall and all that sounds great and what we can do and sound. The property that they're going to demo, the house you see to the right, if you look where my property with the blue barn there, you go straight across. You see that house that's below, all that sand right there is my property. Where the red line is, where they are, there's a house there. That you can see where the sand is, there's tree line right there. My horses, my horses, if you look to the one in the middle with the big group of trees to the left over here, that's where they eat their hay. They're going to demo that house right there where they eat. Every day there is a pole barn that's up for them to get out of the rain and go from both sides of that pasture to eat their hay. And horses thinks everything's going to eat them. I mean, it's directly right there. And I'm going to lose, well, I know what's going to happen. People are going to leave, so I'm going to lose business. I'm going to have all this property with nothing on it. Because it won't be, won't be worth, people will put their animals before. And I've been with a lot of these animals for a long time. But anyways, yeah, so I can't give you an answer. I just found out.
Well, thank you for coming. I know it's emotional. Now, so just to clarify, tonight we're talking about the grocery store, right? We're not talking about the potential building. This is, this is for the
We'll let Mr. Hules respond and he can answer that question.
And then I think we have somebody else who wants to talk.
Hi, I'm Mary Batterton. I live at 1,000 Grizzly Court in Apopka. I am the old owner of the property that Mrs. Daughtry has now. One of the issues that I haven't heard addressed here at all is the wildlife. In the last five years, we've had two incidents of Florida Panthers on the property and Florida wildlife has been out, taking care of those. We saw a mother otter and her baby trying to cross Keene Road the other day, which is insanity. It's just gotten so busy out there. There are fox, there are turtles. It's, it's always been such a wonderful place because you're out in the open air. The animals are around. We always loved it. We hate to see it developed, but we understand that too. And I was glad that this gentleman spoke about doing something to make a break between the properties. It's, I don't know if anybody's looked at the what will happen to the wildlife there. The alligators are there. We find them on the horse trails all the time. The snakes, you know, it's, it's been a wildlife for hundreds of years and now all of a sudden we're trying to develop it into something else. And it's like Shelley said, we understand everything is being developed and grocery stores are fine, you know, and everything is grateful. But I also am totally opposed to having something that's five stories high. I, anywhere around here that there's a Publix, I don't see any five-story building around them. You know, it's pretty much a two-story and that's it. And that's something we'd like you to look at, that and the wildlife issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak?
Hello, I'm Jen Loudon from 2301 Akoya Popka Road. We are the property north of the flag lot. And my main concern is they just purchased this property. They closed November of 2022, correct? They just closed on it, so it's kind of new. The water is the main concern. We have two lakes on our property. They have been flooded. It's part of the St. John's Water Management. Our property is practically flooded now. And now they want to take the flag lot and put more water on it and water in the front. We totally oppose any type of water being on the flag lot or anywhere near our property because we're going to be surrounded. We have horses, we're zoned agriculture. We have nine horses and we cannot have a swamp for our horses to graze. So we do oppose wherever their water or their storm water would be put. And I don't know. And yeah, the five-story, that would be right on our property and I'd be kind of crazy having a five-story building right on our property looking at ours. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this matter?
Hi, I'm Chris Loudon. I own 2301 Akoya Popka Road, which is, I don't know how you, it's far, it's the last one that's close to all the water there. My main concern is this, I think the infrastructure is awesome. And I apologize that I haven't been into any of your meetings. I'm the tour ring bodyguard and I miss them. So I'll start to get to them. I think your infrastructure is awesome. What I'm worried about is the health part of this. I'm worried about the mosquitoes, worried about the bugs. I have a mentally challenged daughter at home and she goes out and works with those horses. I don't want her to get bit. I don't want her to get sick. Nobody's been out there to spray it. Nobody's been out there to cut it. The lakes are overflowing, coming onto the land. Also, if you put water on there, how are you going to get it from that land to stop sliding? You know, I'm super worried about that happening. I'm super worried about the health of the environment that that water is going to bring is my main concern. The horses are awesome. They're costing me tons of money. They're great. But my main concern is the health that it, that the water brings. The rodents that come with it, my animals too. Yep, they'll make it through. It's just we're going to be living in water. Did you guys forget about us over there? We're still there too. We're still part of this community here too. You know, I love it here and I love the pop cup from LA. And I transported here and I dig it. I love it. It's quiet. You guys put the hospital in, if I get hurt, I just walk across the street. Want to put the Publix in, it's great. I can walk right across the street and go to Publix. I'm just worried about somebody getting bit or hurt, Zika virus, waterborne issues. Got too much water on the properties now and we're not taking care of it yet. Now we're going to put more on there. I don't oppose your building, but I just think there's issues there that we can look at environmentally as well to include the animals, the turtles and stuff that are on there as well. Where do we put those? The hawks that have been living there since I've been there? I've been there for 12 years. You know, where do we relocate these guys? And where do I go? Where can I go without living in the water? And I don't think that's fair. I worked awful hard to get to where I'm at and I paid a lot of money for that property. And again, it's awesome. I'm in the heart of the city. I'm 12 acres. Who could ask for anything more than that? But you got to help me out. You got to help me out.
I'll address it here and then you can continue. I might have some good information for you, or at least to start, so.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm done. Thank you very much. I appreciate your help.
And then we'll talk right out.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, a couple of things want to work through. And, you know, obviously there's, there's a process. It's, it's, it's working. I wish it would have worked a little faster because I, just to clarify on those community meeting and the public hearings that happened this fall, each of those was the same notice process and that there's certified mailings that go out for those hearings. But it's a complicated project. It's multi-phased. We've now, the notices reached the people they needed to and, and we appreciate the feedback. I think we are committed to working with our neighbors on this. A couple of things, and I just want to alert the commission to, because we talked to Ms. Daughtry about it, with respect to buffering, something, an important consideration, and we spoke to her about it, is, is obviously we want her business and her homestead to remain, to remain vibrant. We think by the nature of the design of our project, there's going to be good buffering in that here, and I can have our engineer, Jordan, come up and speak to it more, that this is a, this is a challenging site from topography in that there's a lot of relief going across the property. And so there's a series of, of retaining walls that are utilized both on the front edge here and the rear and internal. And it just so happens along this property boundary, there is a 10-foot retaining wall, but it's a drop-off from the Publix. So Ms. Daughtry's property is actually higher by 10 feet. And so that's, almost never can be achieved, but we believe that coupled with a thoughtful landscaping plan, and we have one and we'll have to look at it again after receiving these comments to make, to see if we can buffer it even more, is really going to be an effective buffer to have the Publix lower in elevation by 10 feet, separated by actual concrete retaining walls and, and should be effective. And we're going to continue to work with her. Obviously, we, one comment she did express to us is, well, I don't want patrons of Publix or, you know, of any, any of the uses on this property coming over and feeding my horses. Well, we can make sure that won't happen. And if it's a combination of those walls in an areas that are similar grade fencing, we're committed to putting that up to make sure that, that that is not going to be a conflict. In terms of the stormwater ponds, and it says it right here, these are actually dry ponds. So they will not be holding water. They are designed to percolate out and have the water not stage in it, but stage, designed in accordance with the city's requirements, in accordance with the St. John Rivers Water Management District's requirements.
But they will be wet sometimes, right?
For very mu, but not on a, only on an interim basis. They're designed to handle the 100-year flood event. So at that time, it may stage water for a short period of time, but they are designed to perk out. They're closed systems. They perk out and that's how they're designed to function. So we
Is it possible that it ever overflow?
Well, I think anything's possible, but it's, it's, it's designed to a higher criteria because it is a closed basin to meet that 100-year flood event.
Is there any clay underneath that dry pond? Have you tested for clay?
So you want to speak to the stormwater design, Jordan? You can put your name in.
Because we've had that problem in the past where some supposedly dry ponds had clay layers that turn them into wet ponds.
Absolutely. And that is, has been a concern as we Sorry, Jordan Draper with Kimley Horn, address as well. 189 South Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida. Suite 1,000.
Will it be drilled for clay?
Yes, we have. So we're aware where there's, there's, there is a clay layer across the majority of the site. We've been partnering with the Gotech engineer to confirm overexcavation, especially at the dry pond areas to confirm and ensure that we have that infiltration. Because like you mentioned, we don't want a wet pond. So we're in a closed basin and that criteria is that we need to store the 2596 storms and the 100-year storms and also recover them in case there's a back-to-back event. So while there could be a period of time that there, there is standing water within the pond, we have to design it such that it recovers within 14 days. So that puts anyone's mind at ease regards to standing water.
Did you have found clay in that, in that area?
Correct, we have found clay. And so as part of the design, we'll be specifying that those areas should be overexcavated and replaced with good clean sand.
And he said it better than I did, so I appreciate Jordan coming up. But I mean, there, there has been a lot of work with staff to get this project thus far. We, we know obviously by tonight's comments, we need to continue to work with, with the neighbors and, and address their concerns. I mean, I think one of them we heard tonight was, we have a concern your ponds are going to harbor and breed mosquitoes. That shouldn't, that won't be the case. Even if in the rare back-to-back events that it has, 14 days of standing water, once that water's gone, there are no mosquitoes. In terms of the concern, well, it's, it, it's a, well, I would just admit that mosquitoes are waterborne. And, and if there's no water, then there's no mosquitoes.
How deep is, how deep is the water table underneath that dry pond?
So as, as part of that, and I don't have exact figures memorized and I can present those later if I need to, but part of that overexcavation is removing what we call the perch layer. So that the clay layer serves as a, essentially your water surface elevation. So you overexcavate to allow that water table to lower. So I don't have the exact figures, but there is a water table elevation sitting, let's say it's six feet below existing grade. We will overexcavate to ensure that that water table is lowered.
And you can provide that information next time we come, you come in front of us?
Sure, yeah, we can.
Please.
Yeah, because this is an evolving project. It's going to come before this commission moving forward in any event. In terms of, you know, just to, and I appreciate and understand everyone's concerns, but I just want to make clear that this is not virgin property. This, this property functioned as a nursery and a greenhouse operation for a number of years. There were derelict buildings that were left there that were just recently removed and that's, you know, is, is something that was just taken care of in removal of those buildings. And then there was a single-family residential residence as well. So it's entitled today. We're not asking in terms of, for a new use that isn't allowed under today's code. In fact, like I mentioned before, this is somewhat of a downzoning in that we're locking ourselves into a development program that is less than what the, the mixed-use east shore gateway zoning district would allow us to do. And that's the nature of, of really where And, and that's the nature of, of really where PD zoning comes into play, is that you can put thoughtful design together and work with, um, staff and, and the neighbors to come up with what hopefully will be, uh, a better design. Um, we, of course, will follow all applicable regulations. We have, there's been mentioned this today, that there, there may be gopher tortoises on the property. We will, we will properly permit the relocation of those tortoises, as was done in, with, with, you know, any projects that have those, um, species inhabiting it. Um, I think there's, you know, I think from this development team, there's real commitment to do things the proper, lawful, uh, right way. And, 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 uh, do it transparently and, and collaboratively. So we look forward to working with these neighbors. Uh, we would ask for your support tonight. We know we, we, we will have to, of course, take this to Planning Commission, this would be a recommendation board tonight, and, um, obviously want to, um, continue to work with the neighbors and, and have their support instead of their concern, as which was expressed tonight, so.
So my, my question for you, thank you for that.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
My question is the severability of this project, is tonight we're looking at the grocery store type proposal, and at some point you'd come back to us with a future use of the, what you had, uh, maybe a five-story building. Would your grocery store proposal be standalone? Let's say that five-story building never happened, would you still continue on with your grocery store portion?
Well, I, I will tell you under the, the existing zoning, the mixed-use east shore gateway zoning requires a mix of uses. It can't just be straight commercial, it can't be, just be straight residential. And so, in discussions early on with staff, and when the decision was made to bring this forward as a PD, they, and, and the mixed-use underlying future land use designation, which is the comp plan, um, there was a decision that there had to be, that mix of uses continuing the PD. Now, the residential component, age-restricted senior housing, uh, we had to pick a performance standard, a PD you do. We picked five stories, 65 feet, as a, as a, as a maximum. Um, that project hasn't been designed, it's not before you specifically tonight, that would come back for, forward on a, on a major development plan. And so at that time, I would submit, that's, you know, we, if there's concerns over that height, I'd love to cure them. Um, I, and, and, you know, obviously, we will take that back when, when that project's ready to come forward. But, right now, I view those condit, those performance standards as maximums, and not what the project's gonna be, it just hasn't been designed yet. And, you know, obviously, we have to, we have to set something, we would appreciate the support of it now, because, um, it's harder to, you know, if you go forward and, and then you have to reopen the PD and go through that process again, it's, it's a lot more work than dealing with a major development plan, but we understand, if there are concerns, we'd look, you know, we'd want to understand them.
Well, so, so to your point, and I, I understand that your concern about the time and, and the dollar involved in re, doing, doing all this. But, whenever I look at, say, a five-story building in that north parcel, I'm gonna call it, because there are a couple parcels to the north of that, that are ag, agricultural properties, and then you get to Emerson Park. So if I drive down, if I'm driving down south on Akoi Apopka Road, say I, I hit the, the 414 there, there's no, to the left side, so I'm talking about the east side of the road, I'm driving south. Once you pass Emerson Park, there's nothing high-rise until you get all the way to the, the interchange with the 429. On the, on the west side of the road, there are some high-rise buildings being constructed right now. But, the difference between the west and east side of the road is the west side, there are no intermixed ag properties. That's just my concern.
It, yes, and I, and I.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes, I understand that. I, I would say that, that the only thing I would, um, you know, the, the, there's one intervening property, the, the gentleman's here tonight, we appreciate him attending, so we need to have that dialogue. Um, there, there isn't a, a number of them. And this is a corridor that's, that's entitled and currently under development and transition. But if, it, and it's gonna continue that way, there are, as was stated by Gene, there are plans to widen Akoi Apopka Road in this area. Uh, one thing I did not mention, um, as part of this PD, on the plan, and it's gonna be a requirement, is the dedication of 30 feet along the frontage to further that project. Um, that, and the, the plan shows that in this area, all along the frontage, this kinda looks like just open space, but it's actually reserved for that future road widening. So, um, I, I, I appreciate the comments, I think we'll, our, our team is hearing and, and hearing them.
All right, any more questions?
No, I had a heartburn from the first project, but now I got a headache too.
All right. No further discussion, bring it back to the board for a motion.
Yeah, I think so, right?
Sure. Please be brief.
Motion passed, done. Um, question, they just stated that they want to take the Publix, and these are the place for the Publix and the retention, and they're gonna come back with the five building later. And you specifically asked if the five building did not take place, would they continue with the Publix? And he, all his question, what he said back to you was, well, this is mixed use. So, it can be mixed use with a one-story. It doesn't have to be two-stores, it doesn't have to be five-stores. So my concern is, we get this through, we let this happen, then they come back and go, oh, we need the five-stores now. And there's nothing been done, there's no layout, and like I said, this was the first time I knew about this, was last Friday, getting a certified letter. And I knew the gentleman, and the reason we didn't get it out before, because a private person did it, and not a corporation did it, when he switched it over. The gentleman that owned the property, when I moved in, switched it over, started that process under his personal self, so they didn't have to go when it's a corporation. So, I just would like that to be known, and my concern.
Yeah, that's a great comment, and.
Okay, we're not approving the five-story building, right?
Right, yeah, just that Mr. Attorney, Mr. Rodriguez, can I ask you to, to clarify? Mixed use could be a one-story or more, but they would have to come back to us, and then we would look at that as a second period, right?
Right, we're looking at new, a, a new develop, you know, a, a new development plan for each, as each parcel is going to be developed. Um, so, it will come back.
Okay. So we could address that at that time, if we move forward today? That's just, if we did that. If we did that, we would have a chance to readdress.
Yeah, mixed use doesn't demand multi-stores, it's just mixed use. All right, any more questions or discussion? All right, bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll say one more, one more thing, comment, Mr. Chairman. Uh, if I'm gonna support a motion on this, I would like to see the motion add a condition to reevaluate that rear buffer area, as the applicant had asked, said that he would be willing to do. Cause I have walked part of this property before, and it is a downsoaping. And if we can do some buffer things, I think we would be ahead of the game in addressing, uh, some of the concerns of the, the landowners behind.
Okay, you can make a motion and, and that is an addendum.
So. Do you have your motion paper, man?
I don't have one.
Let me, let me find that.
What do you need?
Can I? Thank you, sir. I'll print it out next week, I promise. Okay, I'll, I'll propose the motion on this. I recommend approval of the shops at East Shore, Plan Development, Master Plan, and Major Development Plan, subject to the findings of the staff report, with the condition that the applicant review and significantly alter the buffering on the east side of the property. Does that pass legal muster?
To try, I, any clarification on what, your, your, the wording is a little too vague in order to, to be a.
Strike that, and I'll start over again. Recommend approval of the shops at East Shore, Plan Development, Resoning, Master Plan, and Major Development Plan, subject to the findings in the staff report, conditioned upon the applicant submitting to the city, uh, new plan for buffering on the east side of the property.
Well, I'll second it if it's, well, we gotta wait. We gotta wait.
I mean, Mr. Uh, I, I'm even okay with you adding the term enhanced buffering along the east end.
Okay, I like that term. Okay, let me strike it, and I'll try it the third time.
Okay.
Strike the previous motion. Now, I recommend to prove, make a motion to recommend approval of the shops at East Shore, Plan Development, Resoning, Master Plan, and Major Development, subject to the findings in the staff report, with enhanced buffering on the east side of the property.
Motion by Commissioner Dooley, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Yeah, I'm gonna do that. All right, we're gonna adjourn, take a five-minute break, and we will reconvene at 7:35, how about that, seven minutes?
Fair enough.
DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the crossroads at Kelly Park Phase Three major development plan, subject to the findings of the staff report. Staff and applicant are available for questions. Any questions of staff?
I do.
Bob, Commissioner Ryan?
Yes. I've got some concerns about West Kelly Park Road. How much more traffic is gonna be on that road?
Um, as I understand it, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna have to pay transportation planner today. Pam is in the middle of a pioneering agreement with these developers as well as others in the area. Kelly Park Road's gonna be widened to accommodate the planned development on there. I'm not sure exactly on the timeline, but I believe she's come here before, and I can't recall what the target dates us as to when construction will begin on the widening. Um, I think, I'm not sure Lance, if you know, if it's already been designed or is, I, I know it's in the process of being designed. I'm not sure if that's concluded.
Will it be resurfaced before it gets four-lane? The problem is, I go down, I go to Lake County for business every year, I mean, every, every week. And last year, I've seen the road deteriorating, especially the west side of, the west of Kelly Park Road is deteriorating. And I don't think we can wait ten years to have that road four-lane.
Ten years is not, I believe ten years is a lot more than, um, Pam-
That's the last estimate I heard from somebody, was ten years.
Do you remember her estimates?
Good evening, Lance Bennett-Pullson Bennett, twenty-six oh two East Livingston Street. And as Jean was mentioning, we've been working with Pam on, uh, there's a road agreement that's been, been approved that allows us as the developer for the crossroads to advance the design of Kelly Park Road from two-lane to four-lane. So we're in the process of doing that from our entrance east to Plymouth Sorento Road. So that's, that's been commenced now, and as far as the immediate improvements, you can see on this graphic, all, uh, there's some intersection improvements that we are undertaking.
Right.
And, and that will include reconstruction of that roadway, Kelly Park Road. And this is just, just, uh, you know, a, a master plan came in previously, which was approved with, with a traffic study, and that traffic study was, was adopted and incorporated into kind of Pam's overall, master plan for the roads, and so this major development plan is just consistent with the master plan.
Well, my question is, will, um, West Kelly Park Road be re-surfaced before, anytime soon?
I, I can't answer that. That's city-
Answer. I'm sorry. Not gonna have an answer. That would be Pam or, or, yeah, Ms. Richardson would be the only one that could probably address that. No one's heard anything about that, we haven't been resurfaced.
Um, you know, Pam, Pam and I, whenever we, we have these projects, she mentions to me the plans for the roads associated with each of these projects, and I don't ever recall resurfacing before the widening of that road.
That's a problem.
So the impression I get is that the hope is that the road is widened and constructed sooner than ten years, to be perfectly honest with you.
Even five years would be too long. It, it needs addressing now. It needs at least to get re-surfaced, you know, between now and when it gets to be four lanes, because it's, it's deteriorating. Every week, I see it getting worse. I get more traffic there. Seeing roads just deteriorating.
What I'll do is, um, unfortunately, she's out sick today. Um, when she gets back into the office, um, I'll go ahead and let her know to give you some information, the, the commission information, and whether or not this will be resurfaced in the interim.
Yeah, I'd like to, like to know that.
And then ask that we be sent those findings?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
And ask that we be sent those findings so that we don't have to wait a month?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, just email them.
Yes.
Just send them a mail with that information, and we'll all have it.
Just like an FYI.
Okay, we'll do.
One more ask on top of that. If we could see a list of all of the planned road improvements in that northwest area would be very helpful.
Yeah.
For this, this development, plus the forthcoming ones.
Sure, I'll do that.
Thank you.
Of course.
Alrighty, any more questions, staff? Okay, applicant have a presentation? Okay, any questions of the applicant? Any further discussion? Alright, bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve crossroads at Kelly Park Phase Three, Kelly Park South, major development plan, subject to the findings in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Norwood. Motion by Commissioner Norwood. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Alrighty, we're on the plat, plats. That's good. Alrighty. Bronson Peak, one A plat. Owners, DRP Florida Five LLC. Applicant, VHB Caro John Powell PE. Location, west of Galloway Boulevard and north of Boy Scout Road. Ms. Sanchez.
Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the Bronson Peak Phase One plat. The subdivision is located west of Galloway Boulevard, north of Boy Scout Road. This is part of the previously approved, um, uh, the Ridge project. It's the Phase Two, or Parcel Two portion. Um, the applicant is submitting this portion of the Parcel Two that comprises twenty-eight townhome units and seventeen, seventeen single-family detached homes. Um, the plat includes future developments as well, and it is, it's centrally located amenity. It is consistent with the Ridge Parcel Two major development plan, and that was approved by City Council on October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. It's also considered with the construction site plan approved with the DRC on June sixteen, twenty twenty-two. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Any questions of staff? Questions of the applicant? Bring it back to the board for a motion and discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend, uh, I recommend, uh, I make a motion to approve the Bronson Peak Phase One A plat, subject to the reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor.
Thank you, Commissioner Washington. Motion by Commissioner Washington. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alrighty, Bronson Peak, Phase One B plat. Owners, DRP Florida Five LLC. Applicant, VHB Caro John Powell PE. Location, west of Galloway Boulevard and north of Boy Scout Road. Ms. Sanchez.
Yes, sir. Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This plat application is for consideration of twenty-two townhome lots and thirty-six single-family detached lot, detached lots, as well as stormwater and conservation tracks. The plat is consistent with the Ridge Parcel Two major development plan of which this is a part of. It was approved by City Council October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, and construction site plan for the Ridge Parcel Two was approved by the Development Review Committee on June sixteen, twenty twenty-two. The recommended motion is to approve the plat, uh, or recommend approval of the Bronson Peak Phase One B plat, subject to the reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor, as well as the staff report. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions of staff? Any questions of the applicant? Bring it back to the board for a motion.
I move that we recommend approval of the Bronson Peak Phase One B plat, subject to the reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor.
Thank you, Commissioner Lorendo. Motion by Commissioner Lorendo. Do I have a second?
Second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five on the plats would be Bronson Peak Phase One C plat. Owners, DRP Florida Five LLC. Applicant, VHB Caro John Powell PE. Location, west of Galloway Boulevard and north of Boy Scout Road. Ms. Sanchez.
This plat application is for Phase One C of, uh, the Ridge Parcel Two subdivision. It's for consideration of sixty-two single-family detached homes. It is consistent with the MDP approved by City Council on October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, as well as the construction site plan approved by DRC on June sixteen, twenty twenty-two. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the plat, subject to the reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions of staff or the applicant? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the Bronson Peak Phase One C plat, subject to the reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor.
Thank you, Commissioner Norwood. Motion by Commissioner Norwood. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. What are we at here? Okay. Oaks of Kelly Park Phase Three A plat. Owners, DRP Florida Five LLC. Applicant, GL Summit Engineering Care of Jeffrey L. Summit PE. Location, north of Kelly Park Road and west of Cedar Rose Street. Ms. Sanchez.
This, uh, the, the Jean Sanchez, for the record, with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the plat for Oaks at Kelly Park Phase Three A. Uh, the subdivision is located north of Kelly Park Road, west of Cedar Rose Street, and in the eastern terminus of the Kelly Park interchange form-based code area. The applicant has submitted the plat that details a portion of Oaks at Kelly Park Phase Three with eighty-five single-family detached homes for open space tracks, as well as dedication of right-of-way along Kelly Park Road for the future road widening. Plat is consistent with the Oaks at Kelly Park Phase Three and Four major development plan approved by City Council on August seventeen, twenty twenty-two. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Oaks at Kelly Park Phase Three A plat, subject to the reviews of the city engineer, city surveyor, and the findings of the staff report. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Any questions of staff or the applicant? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to, uh, approve the Bronson Peak Phase One A plat, subject to the reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor.
Hmm, not Bronson's Peak. Or is it? Okay, I'm sorry, I had the wrong one. Okay, correct. Thank you, Commissioner Washington. You're correct. Motion by Commissioner Washington. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Norwood. All in favor say, aye, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I think you're right. I think that is a mistake. Because we're talking about the Oaks at Kelly Park.
No, this is Oaks at Kelly Park.
Yeah, so that, that needs, that motion's gonna have to be redone.
Okay.
Because that is, that is a typo.
I see, saw that up on the screen. I'm like, that's not right. Okay, so the one we're at is Oaks at Kelly Park.
Well, that's the same, we're just gonna have to change the word.
Three A, yeah.
Apologies. Phase Three A.
Yeah, can you go back to that screen? Okay, yeah, I can, I can do the motion here. I can, I can do it. I understand what's going on. I'll make a recommended motion to approve the Oaks at Kelly Park Phase Three A plat, subject to reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor.
Thank you, Commissioner Doobie. Motion by Commissioner Doobie. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lorendo. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alrighty. Oaks at Kelly Park, Phase Three B. Owners, DRP Florida Five LLC. Applicant, GL Summit Engineering Care of Jeffrey L. Summit. Location, north of Kelly Park Road, west of Cedar Rose Street. Ms. Sanchez.
Uh, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. The proposed plat details a portion of Oaks at Kelly Park subdivision that comprises fifty-one single-family detached homes. It's consistent with the Oaks at Kelly Park Phase Three major development plan approved by City Council on August seventeen, twenty twenty-two. DRC recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Oaks at Kelly Park Phase Three B plat. Uh, staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Any questions of staff or the applicant? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion. Somebody has to, I'm hungry.
I move that we, uh, approve the Oaks at Kelly Park Phase Three B plat, subject to the reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor.
Thank you, Commissioner Lorendo. Motion by Commissioner Lorendo. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, the last one. Oaks at Kelly Park Phase Four plat. Owners, DRP Florida Five LLC. Applicant, GL Summit Engineering Care of Jeffrey L. Summit, north of Kelly Park Road and west of Cedar Rose Street. Ms. Sanchez.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the plat for Oaks at Kelly Park Phase Four. This portion of Oaks at Kelly Park subdivision comprises of fifty single-family detached homes. Is consistent with the Oaks at Kelly Park Phase Three and Four major development plan approved by City Council on August seventeen, twenty twenty-two. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Oaks at Kelly Park Phase Four plat, subject to review, reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor and findings of the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Any questions of staff or the applicant?
Yes, I have questions.
Commissioner Ryan?
I assume that there was a road improvement in a turning lane on Kelly Park Road for this subdivision?
Yes, sir. It was approved for, uh, right and left turn lanes on Kelly Park. Um, the MDP was approved last year in August. Um, and, uh, we required that for the Kelly Park widening. They, um, dedicate, well, I think it's thirty feet, thirty feet of right-of-way. Yes.
I, I just didn't see it on any of the diagrams I was looking for, and I just didn't see it.
Yeah, um, the plat doesn't show the turn lanes. The MDP does, um, because it's part of the development plan other than the plat. Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Alright, bring it back for discussion and a motion.
I can do this one. Uh, the recommended, I make a motion to approve the Oaks at Kelly Park Phase Four plat, subject to the reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor.
Thank you, Commissioner Doobie. Motion by Commissioner Doobie. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who wants it?
Give it to Walker.
Okay. Second by Mr. Washington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any old business? Any new business? Call the meeting closed.